I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Byram, may I have your call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mrs. Dawson.
Here.
Mrs. Harrington. Mrs. Quintern.
Here.
Mr. Rickett.
Here.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda, Dr. Hornick?
No ma'am.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on. Dr. Hornick.
Yes ma'am, thank you madam chair, members of the board. First this evening, it's an honor and a pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Rebecca Towery, who I have known for quite a long time. And she is now the Executive Director of the Academy for Technology and Innovation, our, one of our lab schools that we are participating in, that is at, will be hosted at the 17 campus of the University of Mary Washington. And she is here this evening. Most of the work as far as our involvement in ATI actually happened in the fall, where we had the previous board. And so we thought it would be a wonderful opportunity here this evening to take this opportunity to have Rebecca come out and present a little bit more information about the program and what it is and her goals and our goals collectively. And an opportunity for her to engage here with Orange County School Board. So Rebecca, without further ado, we'd like to invite you to the podium. And again, Ms. Byram is happy to move your presentation as long, along as you are ready. And it's good to see you. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm excited to share a little bit more in detail about what we are building out at the Academy of Technology and Innovation at UMW and our excitement for Orange County to participate. So as we look at the next slide, you will see that this is, this has actually been quite, quite a bit of work in process. So I had the good fortune of being involved in the planning grant, which was a joint effort with Stafford County Schools and the University of Mary Washington, with the intent that we would build something that would benefit the entire region. And so last year and a half ago, I ended up moving into the role of seeing this through further. And we worked on getting initial operating agreements from the initial four school divisions and UMW's Board of Visitors and then getting full approval late last fall from the Virginia Board of Education. In January, when our school board organized, we were able to fully approve Orange County's request to join, which was very exciting, and look at bringing in an initial five students from Orange County to this inaugural freshman class. And so this spring, we see that nearly 85 students have committed to the first cohort of ATI and we still have over 50 students on the waitlist across all five school divisions from the localities. If we move on, I'd like to just frame out a little bit of what we're looking at building out at ATI. So ATI, as you have probably heard at this point, is really focused on kind of the increasingly reciprocal relationship between computer and data sciences applied across content areas. So I've kind of highlighted that reciprocal relationship, but then also tried to show we're going to look at, you know, what does that mean if you're really passionate about political science? What does that mean if you really just want to go down and learn code and go work at Dahlgren and do building out different things? What does it mean if you want to build, build your career in agriculture? How can you apply those technologies to build a sustainable farming business and different things like that? So that just gives you a little bit of context. And then on the following slide, I have kind of our three pillars of intentionality that we constantly go back to in terms of guiding our work. And those three pillars are really ensuring that we are providing innovative K-12 experiences right now. And I use K-12 broadly. We're obviously looking at high school right now, but that whole K-12 sector. And then that we're supporting educator development, a huge component, much like your partnership with Germana is around making sure that we are building this teacher pipeline. That looks a little bit different at ATI where we will be kind of working with students in the College of Education who are at UMW. We'll have a professor from the College of Education with us about four hours a week to provide support to our teachers as well as support to their College of Ed students who are going through the program and doing practicum degrees. And then we've, we've been hiring a really robust teaching team that I think will also support those future educators and help build the pool of teachers coming out into our partner school divisions, school systems. And then we're really looking at ways we can benefit the broader community. So not only in terms of building teacher capacity and producing students who are really highly equipped to build local economies, but we're really trying to look at how do we provide service opportunities, give back through capstone experiences where students are helping nonprofit organizations with data analysis or building an app to better allow food banks to operate or disseminate food, et cetera. So those are kind of our three pillars. And then as we move on, I wanted to dive just a little bit deeper on kind of the key components of the high school experience we're looking to build out there. And I've kind of highlighted both the partnership with UMW, the interdisciplinary approach we're doing, and then that personalized learning. So basically, there's a, I've already talked about the teacher pipeline, but we are also working with both Germana and UMW to build out two different dual enrollment pathways that students can pursue, one that's general studies and one that's more focused around computer science. We are looking at ways to bring in content area experts from UMW as kids continue to progress through and look at different elective options. And then in the interdisciplinary approach, and I kind of already highlighted this with the reciprocal piece, but we're really looking at ways that you are infusing. So kids will take more of a global studies, which will be an integrated world history and English. And then they will have that date in computer science across content areas. And all of our teachers are going to be trained in kind of two true project-based learning and really making sure that in addition to building their content knowledge, students know how to apply that knowledge and apply it across fields so that they are more prepared for the workforce. And then finally, that personalized learning, we have some unique opportunities with it being a regional program to provide kind of a small learning environment and really do some personalized learning where students will during a flex block have the opportunities to either do independent study or small group learning or different things along that so they can really kind of custom curate their learning pathway. Finally, I wanted to close this evening by just sharing out a little bit about what we've been doing to get everything ready in the fall. It's a little faded in the PDF on this screen, but you can see a little bit of an image of a layout of furniture. And so we are doing pretty significant facilities upgrades at that Route 17 campus to prepare for the students coming, including updating our internet cabling, kind of getting more flexible furniture that will work better for high school learners, doing some painting and carpeting. And really, the whole purpose is to, to support the design with this flexible personalized learning and create a space where kids can do really unique things. So that's kind of a high-level overview. I'm happy to answer questions. I also put my contact information there if you would, at any point in time, like to schedule a visit or just schedule an opportunity to discuss further.
Thank you for putting this together. Great information. Does anybody have anything?
Of course. I'll be brief. So you came up with this concept. How many, I guess, give me a little bit of a base. How many teachers are coming out of UMW annual?
On an annual basis? I would have to get back to you on that. My goal is we will work to build that.
So that's where this stemmed from? That's where you began, thinking that we had seen a decline in?
I began from both having experience on the K-12 side, Grand Space, and enough dabbling in higher ed to know that we've got to start doing things a little bit differently in K-12 to reach our learners. And we've got to find a way to attract more people into education. And so it's, I think there's a unique opportunity to fold together both in this type of project where you are really striving to move your pedagogy away from antiquated factory models of education, but then also really working to attract more people into education, partially because you're moving away from that. When you can see this is what it could be to teach, it gets you excited about it in a way that sometimes a typical school doesn't.
Yeah, I like the fact that it did probably feel like an assembly line type of mentality. And now you're thinking outside the box and, you know, we're starting younger, which is giving people a career path. But thanks for coming. Appreciate the information. Think it's a terrific program that you're running.
Absolutely, thank you.
Love we think outside the box. So thank you.
And I'll just start with this, you know, when you, when you look, I know Rebecca, this really started with the school divisions in, in Planning District 16, right? So basically Stafford, Spotsylvania, King George, Carolina, and the city of Fredericksburg. Four of those five school divisions have decided to move forward in this endeavor. And then there was the opportunity to begin looking at planning districts that were kind of on the next rim, kind of just right outside of District 16. And that's where, of course, we fell in, in District, I believe we're nine. And, and so really appreciate the board's support and willing to be flexible and take a different approach to education for students. And we had quite a bit of interest from Orange County students. It was not hard to find five in any way. I believe we still have multiple as well on a waitlist. And so this is going to be really a unique opportunity. I'd like to extend my thanks to Justin Sarver for your willingness when we brought this forward, okay, one of the, one of the first ports of call was can we logistically make this work with getting students and being able to get them physically to the campus? And you were right on it with we can absolutely figure out a way to make this happen. So I'd like to extend those thanks to you as well, Justin, because it takes multiple, multiple groups and multiple areas to make, to facilitate a move like this. And so just really appreciate the support from the board, from Justin, Rebecca for reaching out and thinking about us and making that phone call to me. And Renee for quite a bit of time parsing this out and evaluating it on its merits. And I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity as we move forward.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for having me again.
Rebecca, thank you very much. Feel free to make your way home. And Madam Chair and members of the board, I know that we have closed session next, so I will yield the floor back over to you all. Thank you very much.
May I have a closed session certification, please? Or motion, sorry.
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as Authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment, Salary Adjustment, Retirement of Employees, and the Superintendent's Contract.
May I have a second? All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're in closed session.
Thank you.
Ms. Dawson, can I have closed session certification, please?
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Myron may have her own call, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dawson?
Aye.
Mrs. Quinter?
Aye.
Mr. Rickett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the vote as follows: four yes votes, no no votes, with one member absent. The resolution is approved by a four to zero vote with one member absent.
Dr. Hornig, deposition of personnel actions?
Yes, ma'am. Recommend approval of the personnel actions as presented in closed session.
May I have a motion?
I move that we approve the personnel agenda to include resignation, employment, and transfer of staff and summer school appointments.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Over to you, Dr. Hornig.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. That brings us to the highlight of our evening is to introduce our now newest member of the Orange County High School Administrative Team, and that is Mr. Brandon Hatcher-Fagan who is here this evening in the audience. So, Mr. Hatcher-Fagan began his career in Birmingham, Alabama, and you will know that the minute you talk to him, which is where he served as a middle and high school English teacher.
Are you gonna be yelling "Roll Tide"? No.
Thought you were War Eagle guy, weren't you?
No.
Okay, all right. Also a teacher for special education in elementary and middle school, and was also, note this way, a school bus driver, Justin. Most recently, he has served in the capacity of a reading specialist and the Division Middle School English Liaison in Spotsylvania County Public Schools. Mr. Hatcher-Fagan graduated from the University of Alabama at Birmingham with a bachelor's degree in secondary English Language Arts Education, and he then earned his master's degree in special education, and he is currently at Old Dominion, if I remember correctly, pursuing your doctorate in ed leadership. Mr. Hatcher-Fagan enjoys spending time at the lake with his family and friends. Yes, Mr. Rickett, Lake of the Woods is in Orange. Traveling and spoiling his two dogs, Diesel and Sophie. About his appointment, Mr. Hatcher-Fagan says, quote, "I'm very excited to embark on this new journey and serve the students and families as assistant principal at Orange County High School. I look forward to meeting the students and the community and all the other members of Orange County in the coming weeks. Go Hornets." So, it is without further ado, and a great pleasure that I introduce to the board and to the community, Mr. Brandon Hatcher-Fagan, our new assistant principal at Orange County High School. And so, Brandon, I'd like to start, if you and Mr. Price, if you would join us right over here against the backdrop, and Mrs. Anderson and I will join you. We'll take a picture. Renee is already ready to go.
And if anybody else wants to join, feel free. Graduation. We're gonna put you break, break in the sem.
So, Brandon, we're really happy to have you onboard. I'd like to welcome you to Orange. You've come to a wonderful community, and you are headed to the flagship school in our school division. When you're at one high school town, the high school is all eyes on, and you are coming at a time with your background and your experience working with struggling learners, and your background in literacy, literacy instruction, improving it both at the intervention/remediation level as well as working at the tier-one level across the board. As we look at having writing across the curriculum and really, really quality literacy instruction in line with the Virginia Literacy Act, your background and acumen and expertise are going to be highly valued to high school. So, welcome aboard, and congratulations. And thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board for your support, and we look forward to all that Brandon's gonna bring forward as he embarks on his administrative career at Orange County High School.
All right. Still on you, Dr. Hornig.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. We have one action item this evening, and Mr. Sarver is here. We brought this forward back on the third, correct, Justin?
That's correct. We talked about it.
Where we talked about the lease purchase agreement for this round of school bus purchases for twenty, for this school year, and...
Attached to the agenda is a resolution. It's identical to the same resolution you all saw in January. This will be in a document they'll need for underwriting, and it basically just grants the board's approval of the process. We'll still need to complete credit applications and go through the process of drafting the contract. There may be some attorney review of it as well, but approval tonight will get the ball rolling. The school buses, which were being purchased through Sonny Merriman off of the Virginia State contract, are scheduled to be delivered somewhere in the, between the last couple of weeks of July to the first few weeks of August, which is a significant improvement from what we've experienced the last couple of years. So, I'm happy to field any questions that you may have.
I just have an amendment on the certificate of clerk with the members present and absent for this evening.
Okay.
Anyway, we're not sure if this lender will require this resolution.
They'll more than likely require the resolution, and we're not entirely sure to what degree they'll require, you know, attorney review, but it is a local banker. Both individuals, both the loan specialist and the vice president of the bank are folks that have participated in the past, so I don't expect there to be a whole lot of red tape with this one, but we're very fortunate to get the rates that we did, so looking forward to moving forward with this.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this document with the amendment to reflect the members present for this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Justin, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Appreciate the support that allows us to get started and acquire our buses in a timely manner. This evening for recommendations, we are gonna start with Mr. Honnaker, who has a request for supplemental appropriations. Gary, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm here to ask for a $50,000 supplemental appropriation for the Elementary School Literacy Implementation Support Grant for our Unionville and Lightfoot schools. Anybody have any questions about this?
Any questions?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we were very fortunate to be one of the school divisions to be a recipient of this funding, and this will help us send our educators at Unionville and Lightfoot to this training, which is in line with the Virginia Literacy Act. So, this was really timely and important money, so...
Gary, thanks for dotting that i and crossing that t.
Madam Chair, would you accept a motion on this this evening?
Absolutely.
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation request in the amount of $50,000 increase in revenue and expenses in the operating budget.
Ma'am, second?
Second. Bam!
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Lightning round tonight, guys.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Appreciate your support. Next, I have Renee Honnaker is gonna come forward, and we have a organization that is requesting to be on our approved list of organizations we will accept foreign exchange students from. Renee, I'll turn it over to you.
This is the first time we've had a request for a couple of years, so Laura, you can go on to the next line. The company is called Education, Travel, and Culture, and I researched it. It began in 1998. It offers inbound and outbound opportunities. Students who do come here on a J-1 visa are fluent in English and maintain a C or higher in all their classes before they're eligible to come. Education, Travel, and Culture provides a 24-hour support to host families through a local coordinator, which is one of the things that we've always looked at to make sure that there is a local coordinator who handles everything, and they do. And they are also certified with the Council on Standards for International Educational Travel, which is the other criteria that we always look at. So, the next slide, just for your information, these are the programs, these are the companies that we currently have approved and use, not every year, just, you know, whenever they have a student, so we would be adding them to this list, and I thought this last slide was just for your information, just in case you wanted to know. For the past three years, the number of foreign exchange students that we have hosted at the high school, in 2021, 22, we had six students. I don't have the data on what countries they came from. They didn't have that when I asked, but in 22, 23, we had six, two from Spain, one from Germany, three from Italy, and last year we had five, two from Spain, two from France, and one from Italy, so... So, we are asking that you approve this company as one of the providers.
And these are for incoming?
Yes, it's just incoming.
And you're completely comfortable?
Mm-hmm, I am. I did a lot of research on it.
Yeah, Renee did quite a bit of background research, as we have on all of these organizations, to make sure that they are...
Legitimate.
Legitimate and above reproach.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the education and travel, education, travel, and culture to the Division's approved list of foreign exchange student programs.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're also lucky this evening to have Monica Weaver and Judy Wolfery here to, a step in a Virginia Literacy Act requirement, is to prepare and ultimately submit to the board for approval a Division literacy plan. Again, this is to ensure that we are in alignment with the banks on the river established by the Virginia Literacy Act, so I'm not sure if it's Judy or Monica beginning, but I will turn the floor over to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. You've been seeing a lot of us recently, so we're looking forward tonight to sharing with you details about our Division literacy plan, which is essentially our plan for how we will fulfill the requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act. So, tonight, we are, I'm gonna share this information with you. It does require your approval as our board, and then it will be submitted to the VDOE for their approval. So, to begin, just a reminder of what the Virginia Department of Education has put out as the goal for literacy instruction in Virginia, that we have children with the skills to be successful readers, writers, speakers, and listeners with critical thinking skills, and this certainly aligns with our vision here in Orange County. This is just a reminder of the requirements as they've been outlined by the legislation. We've talked about all of these, I believe, at some point during our presentations, but we've, what you see in bold there, the Division literacy plans and the student reading plans, those are our next steps in fulfilling those requirements. Our teachers do have some experience with developing the student reading plans, which they did last year. It was not required at that point in time, but we did that division-wide in order to gain practice in that area and also to better serve our students last year. So, tonight, as we move through the steps of the plan, you'll see that those are two steps that will be put in place for the school year. So, now, to begin, we're gonna just move into the first section, which is our Division, our Division's vision for literacy. There are six components to the plan. You'll see that this aligns well with our strategic plan, with the mission, as well as the focus areas and the targets that we've established. Our Division that we have developed centers around the instructional practices, as well as the qualifications and skills of our teachers, and then, of course, the materials, as well as how we involve our parents and our community. So, those are outlined for you in seven key areas that are part of our vision for making sure that all of our students are successful readers and writers. So, we have talked before, and you guys, I know, have also approved our high-quality instructional materials, which we are in the process of purchasing those and providing training for those. Of course, the professional development, which we've also begun and will continue this year, and then some of the key instructional skills, including the focus on phonics instruction that's explicit, as well as expanding students' vocabulary and background knowledge, and then, of course, we want to make sure that our students have opportunities to engage with texts that are of a broad variety and complexity. And in order to make all of this work for our students, we need to make sure that we're involving their families as partners in developing their reading plans, and then our community at large in terms of supporting our students. Monica's gonna share information about the other components as they relate to our instructional materials, our professional development and training, and then progress monitoring.
So, the next slide will show our selection, which you all were a part of and approved, our purchase of CKLA as our instructional tool for all of our students in court in tier-one or core instruction, and then, so that's why for special populations, all students will be involved with those materials. For the supplemental instruction, for, at this time, because our program is new as an implementation, we will not be designated a supplemental program. If we see that there's a deficit within the program once we're teaching, then we have access to a list that the state has provided of approved tools that we can choose from to supplement into that certain area. That instruction seems to be weak in that program, but until that arises, we wouldn't be doing that. For English language learners, we already do have Lexia English in place for those students, and that's to bridge the gap between and building their foundation in the English language and building vocabulary between their native language and English. And then, for the intervention tools, the VDOE has not published the complete list. There is an initial review list. The final list will come between August and September. It'll be presented to the board, and then it'll go out for the 30-day review and come back. So, by December, we should have that and be able, we have to file an amendment to this to show which program we're designating. So, at this time, that's still to be determined. And so, in the next slide, you will see the training that we have provided and we shared previously. So, in the training for IMSE, which is the Institute for Multisensory Instruction, all teachers K-5 were provided the opportunity to participate, and we started that training in December of 2022 with our reading specialists. First, we focused the reading specialists and selected teachers who were in those target schools and areas due to the spaces that we had available after we filled all the readings with reading... with reading specialists. And that has, will conclude so far the training that we've provided. Next week, we will have another round of 30 teachers that will participate in that training. Then we had letters. That was Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, and that is a class that is, teachers are able to take, I have the ability to facilitate, and so we had 13 teachers take advantage of that. Two months ago, the State of Virginia approved both IMSE and Letters as a way to satisfy the requirement within the Virginia Literacy Act that teachers be trained in evidence-based literacy instruction. And so any teacher who did not, has not taken either one of these to establish that, I'm sorry, to meet that requirement, will need to take the VDOE Canvas course, and that has not been released yet. So you'll notice that that date is to be determined because they have yet to tell us what date that will be released on. The teachers will have this school year. It's nine modules that they will have to complete in order to say that they have been trained.
Will it be released before the new school year?
That's supposed to be, yes.
Good answer.
Yes, it's supposed
No.
We're hopeful.
They're saying that it's supposed to be.
We're always hopeful when it comes to, we roll out a literacy act, we need support, and then they're holding back some of the information, but you're not allowed to, you got to be out in front, right?
We're trying to be.
And that's the same thing for the VDOE Intervention K-5 set, right? Except for December, it's the same, same thing that you guys are running into.
Yeah.
You guys are supposed to implement it, but you're not going to have it till December.
So they, when they initially went, put out for people to submit their programs, they were expecting 40, and they got 100 and like 30-some were submitted, so they didn't have the staffing to review those programs, so they had to go back and reevaluate and make groups, so that's put the delay in it.
Well, these are, these are some of the things that I know we're bringing up later tonight with the Legislative Committee, but Dr. Hornick and I spoke tonight about timelines and the frustration that we're seeing with that, and that's something, you know, we'll talk later this evening about, but I definitely want to be able to highlight that for you guys, because it seems like it's an ongoing conundrum.
So from that slide, you'll see our core program implementation, training, and that's training that we will contract or have contracted with Amplify to provide. So the teachers, all K-5 teachers will be in the launch program. And then part of that training is called Virgil Strength Training, and we have six sessions, three hours each, available to us. So in areas that we see teachers need, then we can contract and have them, so that's why those are to be determined. The same thing with coaching sessions. We have six onsite coaching sessions that a coach will come and walk with the principals, Judy and myself, to see how teachers are implementing the program and give us pointers and tips in how to strengthen that, maybe the professional development that we need to provide, areas to provide, and go back and pull those strength trainings for. And then the next slide. So monitoring for student success. So we will have VOWs. We completed the pilot. Next year, it will be used across the state, and so that will be for the beginning, middle, and end of year, and that's all students. And then, so all of our teachers K-5 are involved with, classroom teachers do the main lift of doing that evaluation because they are instructing the students, so need to have that data. But then our ELL Special Ed and Reading Specialists also pull in and help with that delivery or assessment. Then with the purchase of CKLA Amplify, it's called M-Class, but it's actually Dibbles, which is an assessment tool, and that assessment tool provides for our 4-5 will become our universal screener until the VOWs, which will go into effect for 4th through 8th grade next year. So in the meantime, it will be our universal screener and give us very similar information to what we will see with VOWs the next year. And that, that will again be all students and teachers. And then M-Class also provides us with a platform to do progress monitoring for our Tier Two and Tier Three students, and if teachers need to look at or would like to look at a Tier One student, they're able to do that as well. So that's available to all of our students and our teachers. And that progress will be monitored bi-weekly, so it gives us longevity of data to look at for a student, and it places that information on AIMLINE to make sure that the interventions that we're providing give the student, are providing the students with the appropriate instruction. So then, so in, to look at this, now we have to reflect and start reflecting on, as a division, what we're doing and so, and how we're delivering. So in order to provide those, teachers will have weekly collaborative planning times, and then there'll be lesson plan development weekly. So principals, myself, at times Judy, Reading Specialists, Literacy Lead Teachers, the English Language Teachers, and Gifted SPED Teachers will be involved in those meetings and plannings so that we are planning instruction for all students to meet the needs. Principals, myself, the Amplify Coach, and the Division Elementary Education, Judy will lead review of lesson plans. And then a bi-weekly classroom walkthroughs will be, again, the principals, myself, and Amplify Coach at times, and Judy. And then our monthly data meetings will be held with teachers, Reading Specialists, SPED, and Gifted, and we will review all of the materials with, as well as the principals and Judy and myself. And so that will be reviewing to make sure we're, our instruction is moving, and if it's not, why? And going in, do we need more coaching? Do we need a different tool? Going back to, is there something in the program that's not functioning correctly, even though it's being delivered, but our students aren't reacting to it? So what's missing, and what do we need to do to fix that? Thank you.
And I'll wrap up with the final component, which is the stakeholder involvement, and this involves sharing information broadly related to the plan, as well as the other work that we've done in this area, gaining input, and then working alongside parents to develop reading plans and better serve their students, engage their needs. So we have linked the Division Plan itself to the presentation for your review as well. And again, once you have approved it, then we can submit that to the state, and once it's approved by the state, then we can post it on our website as well. Any questions?
If we could go back to the VOWs, is that a testing, or is that an assessment that's filled out by a teacher? Could you go into that a little bit?
Sure. VOWs is assessment that's assessed by the teacher. It has subtests within it, so it may be letter sounds, letter identification, word reading, or reading a passage for one minute, and so it times, so how long did it take the student, and how many words did that student read correctly? And then there's a level that all, at each grade level, that students should reach, so it takes all the information into account, and it'll show if there's a deficit at each one of those subtests. And if it, and then it also gives us a composite, and it tells us, are they at low risk for reading failure, moderate risk, or high risk? And so our high and moderate are what we end up being our Tier Two and our Tier Three students, where we provide interventions for those students to bring them into the low risk of reading failure.
So how do teachers fit that in with their day-to-day job?
It's a section of time, like we would have MAP testing or SOL testing. We block out those times. It's replacing POWs, which they've always had in there, so it's a different assessment. But in, because we were part of the pilot, it did take a long amount of time, and there were 17 other districts. They found out it was way too long, so they did go in and pare down the amount of subtests and looked at the data to say which ones gave the best information to decide where students were. So it's supposed to be considerably less time, and it, it would align with POWs, the amount of time that POWs took as well.
Okay. And then, so with that, are there opt-outs? Are parents allowed to opt their children out of this testing, or do you know?
Because it's state data, like with the pilot, we were told it wasn't. We used that information because we were in a pilot, but it's my understanding, but they're also able to opt out of SOLs, so I'm not sure, honestly.
Okay. That's going to be a question for down the line, but
We haven't encountered that.
My biggest question would be, like, how is the data stored and used? Because is it, is it tied to the student individually, and is that tracked throughout their entire educational career, or how does that work? Because that's
It's in the data system that we use, and we get the names, and we can see the names, but anything that has been on their end is coded. It is not by student name, it's by code.
Okay.
I was just going to add, the one-on-one testing by the teacher really does get them very well acquainted with each of their students and their, their skills as a reader.
That's all the questions I had, thank you.
Do we have current data available for how, how we did this year on VOWs?
Yes, we, we do have some. We have shared that, if it's okay to share some tonight. We have some overall data that would be just division-wide that we're able to share this evening. A couple of cautions around it are, of course, first of all, it's a brand-new assessment for our teachers, and also in how they respond to that assessment to design their instruction to target student needs. And along with that, not all of our teachers have been trained yet on structured literacy, but we do have something we can share.
And the materials, until next year, the materials weren't completely aligned. We made changes to the materials that we had in order to align it as best we could, so that will affect our data.
Are we able to project that? Did we share that? I believe I did.
Are we planning to come back next week because we could
We certainly can do it then.
At the next meeting?
Yeah.
Because I think I'd prefer to delay it for Ms. Harrington.
Would you rather wait for another, is that what you said?
Yeah, so that you guys don't have to redo the information twice.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. And last on the list this evening is our presentation of proposed policy revisions. And this comes from our most recent policy drop, and there are a number of various updates, everything from something that might be more editorial to something where there is an update to a cross-reference, or a legal reference, or potentially a complete addition or reworking of content. And I know you all will have to work through each of these individually. I think it would be worth spending some time specifically to have Ms. Adler come forward, and we are going to take a look individually at Policy JED. Because these revisions in particular are coming exclusively from us and the work that we have done over, I would say, the better part of a year to nine months with a attendance task force of leaders across the school division. Our preliminary data suggests that we will see some significant improvement in student attendance. We are, we would, we are waiting to get the finalized data, so we know this is coming from our in-house tracking. We also know that the work we did, particularly at the elementary level and our middle level with after-school tutoring and high-intensity tutoring, after-school hours, and the ability to recapture student time was beneficial to all of our buildings. And we need, of course, to continue to focus on student attendance, which is where the vast majority, or all of these recommendations that we have to enhance this policy have come from. And so Susan, I'll turn it over to you to kind of be the spokesman of the group, and we can just work a little bit through these. There, there are not many changes per se, but they're, they're pretty important changes, so I'll pass it to you.
Okay. So in the policy, the first, the two highlighted in green are just, one, the parent-student, it's called the notification handbook, so we just wanted it to reflect what the name was. And I know last year, we changed the number of days a student would have to provide a note. We just took that out and just put when they returned to school, that, that kind of took it, so nobody was worrying about three days, five days, just when the student comes back to school, if they'll bring a note indicating why they were out.
Could I make a note?
Sure.
There's two returns in that sentence, so if we could strike one of them?
Absolutely.
I was going to wait till the end, but you did it before me.
The next section I worked with Ms. Honaker on is, we're not quite sure where this statement came. If you look at the very bottom of that paragraph, it talks about high schools that work, high schools to work partnership, which was a program a long time ago, many years ago, when I was an assistant principal at the high school, we had high schools that work, and it was a program through the state. And so I'm thinking that's probably maybe where some of that language came from, so we don't participate in that. But we also wanted to remove that paragraph, as Ms. Honaker indicated. Our students participate in many more days of work experience out in the community, it's part of their schedule, and so limiting it gives the wrong impression.
And the parameters are already established in additional policy in our practices with work-based learning and the approval of going through there, so that, the, the information here is already being addressed, and the banks on the river are already being established through other mechanisms, so this was not only inaccurate, it was also redundant.
Correct, correct. If you move on down, we added, in relation to several other changes highlighted in green, we asked, under apparent responsibility, one was about notifying the schools about anticipated absences, and then under the student's responsibility was that, obviously, they have the opportunity to make up all their work when they return to school. So whatever reason they're out for, whether it be suspension, or if it is just, you know, they're absent from school because they're sick, or a doctor's appointment, or what have you, all students are able to make up any work that they've missed at school. And then we just highlighted what the school's responsibility, it was more semantics, that we would make contact with a parent or guardian to understand why a child was absent from school. The next section is about, in our, in this policy, Orange County put into the policy about 10, that there were 10 excused absences that parents had kind of upfront. But what we know is, when we report to the state and we're looking at chronic absenteeism, it doesn't matter if you were out because you were sick, or at the doctor's office, or because you were skipping school. They don't delineate between excused or unexcused absences, it's just an absence. And so this gives kind of the false impression that there's 10 days out there that don't really count, but they do. And so we wanted to remove this. We also studied several policies of counties around us, as well as the code, and we know that all the absences count. So chronic absenteeism, just a reminder, it's if you miss 10% of the school days. So if we have 180 days, that's 18 days. People have, maybe have a false sense that I've got 10, but then there's another 18. It's actually 10 are part of the 18, so we're already more than halfway, and you're going to be chronically absent. So what we wanted to do was remove that statement, and then just highlight what our goals are and what our procedures are as far as when there are any absences. And I actually picked up another one that should have been, a word that should have been stricken under BA upon the fifth, it should just say absence, that unexcused should be a word that we strike. And then this is our policy, so anytime there's a student misses five days, no matter what the reason, we are going to make sure we've made contact. Most schools are going to make contact if they miss one or two days, but this ensures But this ensures, at least at five, we're going to make contact with a family. And as we work through the process with a family, our social workers, you know, we are taking into account, why is the student not in school? Is it, they're just refusing to come? That's very different than a child who has maybe chronic medical condition or there are other, you know, circumstances that we need to take into account as far as how we move forward. But whether they're missing because they're sick or whether they're missing for, you know, another reason, just because they don't maybe want to come to school, we need to always make sure that we've made contact with them when it first starts, not after 10. So that's kind of the rationale behind removing that statement.
Do we want to narrow that scope down? Because I heard you mention that a lot of schools do two or three days. And if we're trying to get on top of chronic absenteeism, should we not maybe reach out a little bit sooner than five days? Because a week is a long time away from school.
That would certainly be up to the board. I know each school has a little bit different procedure. Certainly the high school's procedure, as far as who they contact and how often, is a little bit different than, say, Lightfoot Elementary School. But all of our schools are working really hard so that within the first one to three absences, we are making contact with the families. It might be a robo-call or it might be a person who actually calls. So if we want to change that, that's certainly something for the board to decide.
I think two or three would be better.
I agree. I'm fine with two or three.
So two or three. What would we prefer?
Three.
Three. Okay.
It's fine.
And then we also removed the paragraph regarding family travel. Because again, whether you're absent because of, you know, a doctor's visit, a dentist's visit, court, or a vacation, it all counts the same. So when it comes to chronic absenteeism, whether it's excused or unexcused, it's going to, it all counts. There's no delineation between the two.
And we wanted to capture the major theme of this paragraph. Back up, you look at some of the first changes we were talking about, it is helpful if we are informed about pending absences. And then we will work with you in the anticipated absences. So that's really the key theme in that paragraph is having communication with the school. And then we have a plan going forward, hopefully in real time, where we are helping the student ensure that he or she can make up the missed work that they have. So we...
Correct.
The theme and the important part of that paragraph, we wanted to ensure is still codified in this policy.
I think it also sets a better precedent for families that you don't need to get your principal's permission to go on vacation. I don't know. I wouldn't like that.
But then it also kind of gives the impression that then it's okay and they don't count and that we know all the absences count.
Correct.
Is there a special form for parents if they are? Is there something we have already where if a student is going on vacation, is there a special form? We have them complete?
We have had a form in the past. This past year, we did not use a form. Most parents are going to contact the school through email or a phone call to say, here's, you know, this is our anticipated vacation, how long we'll be gone and when we'll be back.
Yeah, I was just, if, having it in writing, obviously, is a lot better than a verbal communication.
Parents are very good at communicating through email. That's made it really easy, especially, you know, a lot of parents don't have access to answer a phone call during the day because of work. But they, a lot of times, they can send an email very quickly.
Great. Thank you.
Susan, back up under number one, student attendance policy. The line right above where you have notification highlighted, it says, "Excused and unexcused absences are defined in the parent-student notification handbook." So does the handbook also make it clear to parents that there really isn't a difference between excused and unexcused in terms of what the state counts?
It doesn't indicate which one...
I mean, what? I can look at the notification book, but...
It basically says, here's what an excused absence is, here's an unexcused. I do know when we get to, say, 10, 12 absences, or we say we have to get to an attendance plan, or we have to take a family to court. The unexcused are really what drive a lot of, some of the outcomes. Are they, do they have legitimate reasons or not?
That was the root of my question, is if it really doesn't matter, why do we delineate in the first place? But that answers that question. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think that's good.
Okay. All right. If you have any others, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you, Susan. And I will turn it back over to you.
Okay. On to number six, Board Member Items, Legislative Committee Update. Ms. Quinter, please.
Yeah, so we get into it a little bit earlier this evening. I'm sad that Sandy's not here to engage in this conversation, but we did talk briefly beforehand to gain some understanding. We have our next Legislative Committee meeting on Thursday, June 20. The first one, we got a lot of information. I believe I sent you guys the minutes from that. We will be having, Laura's not going to be here this time, but I believe she will be attending them moving forward. So she will be our clerk for that. But I didn't know if you all had any ideas or discussion points that you would like us to bring up at the Legislative Committee. Now would be the time to really push for policy or legislation, so that way we can get through the whole process, if that's something that we are interested in. I know this evening, after hearing some of the presentations, I did want to bring up a lot of the timing with VDOE and some of the issues that that causes down the line that they might not realize. Spoke with Dr. Horneck this evening as well in looking towards maybe incentives for teaching in rural areas. Unfunded mandates causing some heartburn. Cost of compete adjustment, we don't really benefit from that, so it's harder for us to compete against other jurisdictions such as Culpeper, Stafford. You know, they have a little bit more incentive to go to those schools. But one, one, let me back up. One issue that I had with, going back to the VSBA, was the fact that they are not accountable to the taxpayers. Their funded, the majority of their funding is through taxpayer dollars. But yet, the taxpayers don't get any insight as to what they spend on, what they communicate about. And most recently, with our Board Docs conundrum and the increasing costs on us, that sparked another concern of mine. And so I was wondering what your all thoughts were about asking for legislation to be pushed that would make nonprofit organizations that are funded by X amount of dollars, of taxpayer dollars, to be subject to FOIA laws. I think that would clear up a lot of heartburn that I have with the VSBA. And I know that there was another organization, SBMA, that would fall under the same thing. And I'm sure there are other organizations out there. But thinking specifically with education, I think that this would provide a level of transparency that might entice more members to continue to remain with their services. But I just wanted some feedback on that as well. So all of that being said, I don't know if you guys have any concerns, anything you want me to bring up? If that's something that you'd be interested in pushing for legislation in that committee or not? But just preliminarily discussions on those things.
I like the idea of the FOIA. I also like, you know, the timeframe seems to be, doesn't only, not necessarily just hits the education end of it, but also hits our budgeting end of it as well. And having to be, we get a budget months, weeks or months after we've approved a budget and we have to adjust and we have to adjust again and we have to adjust multiple times. So it's, I think, the timeframe for, fighting for, you know, some more hard deadlines to them, not necessarily to us, but harder deadlines on them, that we have information so that we're able to move forward quicker and not be, you know, keep going back and back and I really don't have anything else that I can think of, but I definitely would like to keep it open and see if there's anything else that I, over the next, Thursday is your meeting?
Thursday. Yes.
She's writing. She's writing.
I was going to say, did you?
No, I'm thinking.
Sounds great. Whatever we can do that impacts that group right there. So, you know, I'm listening to the presentation and as hard as all of you guys work, you can go through and set up the entire system as you believe that it should be rolled out and then, but you're not given all the information. And then halfway through, they can change. So it's like getting a test, not really studying for it or having any idea of what's going on with it. So that is extremely confusing to me. We're held to pretty hard dates. Yeah, that's tough, you know, for me. So there's an online testing to help you with teaching trainers, correct? Monica, help me.
It's a training platform for teachers.
That's not available. Correct.
Not right now.
Yeah. So anything...
But yet, they're going to have to have that training before the end of the year.
Right. And all of the work that they've put into it, hopefully, it would be for not, you know, we will see the fruition of it. But it could change because they have not given you all of the information and all of the tools and the facts necessary to achieve what you're trying to get.
We know that it's similar to the reading specialist training they completed this year, and that'll be nine modules. And each module was released once a month over the school year, one each month throughout the school year.
Those are the things, you know, for me, that is a direct impact for how hard we have, you know, they're doing all this, you know, they still have their full-time job. This is, I'm sure, you guys are here kind of late sometimes putting these programs together. That's what I would be interested in.
Anything else to add?
As far as the legislation's, anything that we want to push? Do we want to delay that? I don't, I don't want to act on something without having a good read on the board.
You're talking about the nonprofit subject to FOIA?
Correct.
That one? Well, there is a current lawsuit underway. There was a, I think last week was the last court date, and I don't know what the result of it was, but that may have some impact as well when we see the result of whether or not the court decides that VSBA should be subject to FOIA law because they are taxpayer-funded primarily.
And this is not to say that it will get pushed anywhere. Obviously, there are legislators and they can do whatever they want. That's their lane, but this is part of, you know, the services that we had previously. People would push for legislation one way or another. And I think that would benefit us all. I mean, honestly, that was the biggest heartburn that I had with the VSBA is, we don't know who they're talking to, what they're doing, how they're developing plans. And they're pushing policies and all kinds of things at every school district in the state. And I'm just not comfortable with having no accountability to what they're doing. And I didn't want to continue to fund that. But moving forward, that might change if there was an accountability piece. So I don't know if that's something we're comfortable with pushing or not. I don't want to...
I would like to, I would like to move forward with it. Obviously, get our legislators' ideas and what they think and...
At least discuss it. Bring it up and see what they're...
It's definitely worth a discussion, for sure.
Right.
Obviously, the other aspects of the timeframe and the compensation, those are all critical, I think, too, in getting us to where we need to be. So, as Orange County, those affect us the most. I think Dr. Horneck was talking about our line in the sand. We're not on the right side of the line in the sand, so we don't get the benefits that other counties do, so...
Are they incentives for teaching?
Yeah. Yeah.
You guys have any other? Are you guys okay with all of that?
Yes.
Being discussed? I'm asking your opinion.
You already know my opinion. We're no longer with the VSBA. So to me, it's a kind of a dead point. If you want to push for legislation through our elected representatives, I mean, I'm always going to be, I'm always going to sit there and say, elections have consequences. No question about it. And, you know, this county, you know, we have elected representatives that are in Richmond and they need to listen to what we have to say. So, you know, should a nonprofit be FOI-able? Okay. Yep. Got no problem with that.
Okay.
I don't know...
I don't know if it'll go any further than that, but I didn't want to speak on anything without bringing it to you guys first and...
Yeah, I'm trying to stay away from it because, and I said this last time, we removed ourselves from the conversation, you know? So to be in the room having the conversation with the people and asking these tough questions to those people, we have now removed ourselves from that. So now we have to go through elected, our elected representatives. And I'm not saying that that's a bad path. I'm not saying that that's a wrong path. We have just limited ourselves. That's all I'm saying. But I have no problem pushing forward with that legislation, so...
Okay. That sums up my updates and conversation then.
Perfect. All right. Moving on to Board Member comments. Is there any future agenda items that we would like to add to the next meeting?
Legislative Committee update?
Legislative Committee update.
I can fill you in on what happens.
Do you have any?
No.
Meetings coming up?
Currently.
I don't think we do either. No?
I would love to know a little, can you give, give us a little bit more to push in the direction that she's talking about? Give a little bit more specifics of where you and Renee aren't getting the resources that you need to implement programs that are being, that come through the Vigil Department of Education. Not today, not right now. Yep. You follow what I'm saying? You know, I continue to hear from teachers, testing. We test, man, we do a lot of testing. I'm sure testing is good. You know, I'm not an educator, so it's hard for me to sit up here and go, well, you know, are we doing too much testing, too little testing? But, you know, I hear from teachers, we, you know, we test. A student doesn't do well, we do two weeks and then we test again and the teacher can tell you, well, they're not going to pass. Then why are we testing? Again, I don't want to get into a long conversation. But I'd like, if we're going to have a legislative committee, that's the stuff I would really like to focus on and push on, on some of those particular things of, you know, sometimes we get, you did use the word unfunded mandates, you know, where we have to do some things that may apply to our county, our school division, and may not. So if y'all would not mind, thank you, on top of the 100 other things you've got going on.
But hopefully this helps you. That's my goal. The retreat, is that something that we...
We're waiting on a callback from Mica. So we haven't finalized that as of yet. But speaking of our attorney, I would like to direct Mica to draft a letter advising Diligent to uphold their original, their originally agreed-upon contract for Board Docs that was signed and paid for in March.
I concur.
I'm confused. So we got a discount.
So we have...
We were doing so well tonight. You guys were laughing. We were kind of in a little entertaining...
They still are.
Like, we really were, you know? And you guys were feeling good about being here. Now, so we got a discount because we were with the VSBA. So Board Docs charges more for people who aren't. I mean, that's business.
But the contract was signed in March and paid for.
Okay. So if it's, are they within their contract period?
No.
Okay.
So Mica has confirmed...
Right.
That we have a legitimate standing.
Perfect. Perfect.
So that's why I want to track, to have him send a letter to them.
Why is it March and not July? Dr. Horneck?
I'm not sure unless it was based on when we
Originally, probably based on when we originally started back.
So it's March to March?
Yes.
It was March of '24 to March something of '25, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
There was an email.
I'm sure there was.
Still laughing.
Didn't mean to bring it on you, so I'm sorry. So, okay. So that was my board member comment. Is there anything else that anybody else has? Okay.
No.
All right, communications, Ms. Byram.
Okay, for the July meeting, I will update the agenda to remove the items that we took action on tonight. I've just got some placeholders in here, so I will update this to add the legislative committee report under board items, and, and just in case we have any new things we need to bring to you. So.
So that's the July agenda, and that is the 15th, just to remind everyone.
And then the board calendars for July, we don't have a whole lot on here right now, but it will get very busy beginning on the 22nd for the New Teacher Institute. And then all teachers will return on the 29th, and they'll have a combination of either PD days or workdays. And then moving forward to August, it seems like we just ended school, but we will have the first day of school on August 7th. Open house on August 1st at all schools, and teachers will have another four days of PD and working in their classrooms. And then we have a school board meeting on the 5th, work session on the 26th.
I do have a question. So the New Teacher Institute, is that some, is that what we did last year, where we had the week-long thing? So each of the board members were able to come in and meet? Is there a schedule that would go out?
Yes, Yvonne usually prepares a schedule as we get closer, because I believe the first day, they might be here, gather here at first. And I think we split it between elementary and secondary, maybe, last year. Don't quote me on that, but yes, there is a schedule.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.